All right. It is seven o'clock and I want to honor everybody's commitments tonight. First of all, let me say happy Hanukkah. I apologize that we're starting this on the first night of Hanukkah, but I wish well to all who are celebrating that tonight. I will start with a call to order. And where my, there we go. So in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22, House Bill 197 and House Bill 404, I hereby call to order the Bexley Board of Education, City School District Board of Education meeting, sorry, special meeting for Thursday, December 10th, 2020. And with that, Mr. Smith, would you please roll the call the roll?
Mr. Barno.
Here.
Ms. Minio.
He turned off too soon.
Yeah.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
And Ms. Snowden.
Here.
I believe Ms. Mitchell is not with us, correct?
Unable to join tonight, so she is, we're recording this for her and she'll be watching us on at her own time. So with that, I think we can just get started. We've got an approval. Can I have just an approval for our agenda for this evening, please?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries. So tonight, we will be looking, Jill Abraham is going to be presenting to us our service model for a new way of doing hybrid that she and her team has spent countless hours on. I want to thank them for their diligent diligent efforts. And the very collaborative nature of this, I think she'll go into detail, but I know there were over 40 people on the task force, over 100 people who weighed in on, and that's before you think about the public comments that came in on the website. So she's very collaborative and Jill led this with amazing grace and aptitude for putting together so much information in a short amount of time. We really pinched the time on this and I just want to express her sincere sincere appreciation. So with that being said, go ahead, Ms. Abraham, and take it away.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. As President Snowden shared, this evening, I will be sharing the recommendations from the Service Model Task Force. Kyle, thank you. As she had indicated, we had 40 members on our task force and our task force was comprised of parents, community, teachers, administrators, and two members of the Board of Education. We began meeting in November and have met over the last several weeks and look forward to providing our recommendations to you this evening. The 40 members in that task force also made up a membership in six work groups. And so the task force members moved forward into one of the six work groups listed below, the Community and Communications Group. There were three general education work groups which represented the elementary, middle, and high school levels. We also had a specialist work group which was comprised of our school counselors, our special education staff, gifted intervention teachers, as well as our literacy intervention support teachers. We also had an allied arts and abandoned string work groups, and then staff and student operations. In total, when you looked at the membership of those groups, we had over 140 members participate and the work groups met, some of them met almost weekly in this work. And so I can't thank them enough for their tireless tireless efforts to think together. Our work groups did a couple of things. First, they met to review our current model or the models that we've had. They also met to explore new models and then they would take their thinking back to the task force and the task force would provide feedback that would go back out to the work groups and they would revise. And so it was truly an iterative process that we've worked through over the last several weeks. We also made a commitment as a task force that we wanted to be strong in our communication and be led with feedback. And so a couple of ways that we did seek feedback, our middle and high school principals conducted a survey with our six through 12 students and over 629 students weighed in to tell us about their hybrid experience. And that's a pretty remarkable number in itself, something we're very proud of. But in addition to that, of those 629, 430 students provided thoughtful written responses and their feedback was very, very impactful in some of the recommendations that we're going to bring forward to you this evening. We also utilized a Google form on the district website where we encouraged parents to ask questions, provide perspective, weigh in, and as those Google forms were submitted, I would review them daily and collect the data, the feedback from those and sort them into categories into a shared document that was distributed not only amongst our task force, but amongst our administrative team. I provided that to the Board of Education and again, so that everybody had a feel and pulse of what people wondered about and also what they would be recommending. We included the agendas for our works work on the district website as well as summary notes. And we worked with our district and school newsletters and even created an FAQ as of last week to provide additional information to our community. The work of the of the task force was really trifold. First, we decided that we needed to evaluate our district structures and for the purpose of this conversation, structures means looking at our resources, the resource of time, the resource of facility, the human resource, and even technology as a tool that could support us with future models. We were also asked to think and consider what new models might exist that would increase contact time inconsistency with our students. A theme that was very clear in feedback that we received from both students and community. And then we continually asked ourselves that as we identified a potential option that we wanted to make sure and prioritize that this option would protect the health, safety, and teaching and learning for students and staff. And these were the two questions again and again that we asked. Does this proposed model maintain the health and safety of students and faculty? And as we did our work, we had to really think through what health meant and it was defined for us as we we got our feedback, but it meant more than just being physically well. It also meant looking at the social, emotional, and mental wellness of our students. Of course, in terms of safety, we looked at protocols that would establish or that we had established to mitigate the risk of COVID spread. And then the other lens that we were encouraged to look through was to make sure that we maintained or improved teaching and learning. And when we thought about teaching, we specifically thought about the capacity of our teachers and capacity to do so many different things, including planning instruction, delivering the content, providing thoughtful feedback, making personal connections with students, and doing all of that for students who are both in person and potentially remote. And then learning was defined as engagement with content, peers, and teachers. Dr. Good gave us a simple charge, determine a continuum of service models. So we began by looking at what we had. The summer task force had developed the fully remote model, and that's currently what we're experiencing as of this week. It had also defined the hybrid AB model, which we've implemented. And we know how to do fully in and we look forward to being fully in when conditions allow us to do so. In addition to that, we had offered an e-learning academy as a choice option for families who had preferred that their students learned from home during this time. So that really left some space between the hybrid AB and fully in. And the question was, was there anything we could do different to the hybrid AB model? Or was there something completely new? As with any good task force work, there are unexpected opportunities that happen as you review and revise and and think of new ideas. And these are just some of the areas that reflect opportunities that arose for further or different thinking. The CDC cleaning protocols, the summer, when our task force were working and they were considering different learning models or service models, the CDC cleaning protocols were structured in a way that it made it very difficult for us for us with a time perspective and a human resource perspective to be able to have a student learning split midday. The cleaning was extensive. It would require more personnel than we had. So we were limited in some of our options that we could consider at that time. Since then, though, the cleaning protocols have been revised and so that allowed us to explore new and different options. We've also had the opportunity of recent to begin to experience quarantining of students and not just individuals or single students, but larger groups of students. And so that's prompted us to think about how do we plan for and connect those students to the learning while they are at home as directed by health officials. Student voice weighed heavily into our thinking and learning this time. I appreciate there was a student, one of our 629 students who had completed the survey and the student had noted, if you are someone who makes decisions, and if you're reading this, if you're even, if anyone's even reading this, I hope you're listening. And I hope our students know we did listen because we did look at the survey data and we did pass it along to administrators and task force and board members to understand what the student experience was like as they worked through a COVID learning environment. Connections was a dominant theme. Connections to peers, connections to school, connection to classroom, connections to teachers, and how could we improve those as we looked for new models? Mental health has always been a priority for us with our Bexley students. But now we had new mental health concerns to think through and support our students. Students who are anxious about contracting COVID. Students who are experiencing loss of opportunities. Students who were experiencing the loss of being with their friends and their teachers. So we had explored ways that we could better support that and what could increase contact time inconsistency do to support those mental health needs. And then again, teacher capacity, as I had referenced before. Our teachers are exceptional, but they are asked to do exceptional things in several different learning models right now. And how could we better support their ability to do their work with some revisions? So I've referenced our Bexley students as weighing in and having great influence. And this is just a couple of the items from that particular survey. But these two questions had influence with us. The first one, which learning mode works best for you? And if you slide all the way down to the bottom, we were happy to see that our students indicated that 51% of them indicated in-person learning is their preferred mode. It works best. But perhaps the the statistics that was of most surprise, the data point was the 7% where students indicated that for 7% of them, Zoom was the preferred learning mode. So then we asked which learning mode is the hardest? And 60% of our students indicated Zoom is hard. And when they talked about it being hard, they talked about Zoom fatigue. They talked about the lack of connection. They felt like it was a lot more to manage and to be in front of a computer for long periods of time was just not their preferred method. And so we really looked at their responses to these two questions and then again, their personal experiences. And from there, we stepped forward to plan for not only our six 12 students, but also our K5. So tonight, the two are the recommendation that I'm going to make is for these two particular models, an AM PM model for our K5 students, and then really a 10-day, every-other-day cycle for our six 12 students. So let's look at the AM PM model for our K5 students first and what a day would look like for them within person learning. And again, I would preface this by saying that our priority was to look for ways to increase contact time and provide consistency for our students. So with this particular model, our students would attend either the AM or the PM session of the day. Each of those sessions are three hours in length. I do reference the time on this slide as our most current thinking. We had released some times last week and based on feedback from our community, we made some adjustments. So what you see tonight, and I believe what was on went out today through the district also represents these times. But two, three-hour learning blocks during the day, students attend one of them. And during that time, we have a very focused instructional effort that will provide our students with opportunities for intensive work in reading, writing, and foundational word skills as well as math. And again, those are the core areas for our youngest learners. That's the foundation. And so we want to spend the most of our time and our focus on those two areas. Our students who receive specialized instruction per their specialized plan would also have that support. And then our students would get to engage in allied arts in person two days a week. And allied arts, as it's laid out, provides an opportunity for students to have a physical outlet and a creative outlet, which we also see as a benefit to support some of the mental health stressors that our students are facing. That same schedule obviously would be repeated for our afternoon learners. And then in the midsection, the transition time, this would allow time for us to adequately clean our facilities and prepare it for the transition for the second cohort to come in. It would similarly allow us time to conduct a band and orchestra for our fourth and fifth grade students. And we were very excited to find that this time would work well with our specialists who provide this instruction because we do share them with the middle and the high school. And so their schedules similarly aligned and would allow us to provide this important time for our band and orchestra students. So that would happen a couple of days a week as it's indicated on this particular chart. When students were not in session, so the other half of the day, what would they be doing? Well, just like if they were in school and we had extended time, we would be asking them to do extended practice with those important literacy skills. And they would have extended math practice as well. So we'll ask them to do that when they're remote. We'll also have science, social studies, and health lessons available to them through their Google Classroom. And I want to give a shout out to our K5 teachers who have been working collaboratively across the districts for the last several weeks in sharing their units of study so that if we were to move to this model, that we have well-developed units and that we really build off of the collaborative efforts of all of our teachers. As I mentioned, allied arts would happen two days in person and then on the remaining days, then students would have access to Google Classroom and then on Wednesdays, they would also have access to a choice board. And this would also give our allied arts teachers the opportunity then to provide Zoom sessions on Wednesdays to connect to connect with kids who could either be home for quarantine or who just need more of a personal connection. Our school counselors will continue to support our students' social, emotional learning through remote Zoom sessions. And then we also have the opportunity for some additional band and strings support. Again, we have specialists who are available per their schedule that if students want to join remotely to do a small group lesson, that that would be an additional option. So that would be an increase of time for them. Most students with this schedule would stay with their current cohort or their group. So if they're a group A student now, they would likely be an AM student in this model. If they were a group B, they would be a PM student. Now, there are some exceptions to that. And we'll talk about that as as we move forward in in this presentation. One of the questions that we received from the community was, is this really an increase in minutes? If you're going to make the change, does it benefit kids in terms of minutes of instruction? And so our elementary principals used this data. They ended up comparing the number of minutes that currently happen in person in our hybrid week as it exists now. So group A students, as an example, are currently in person two days live. And so that's represented by minutes in the green. And then as we look to five half-days, the blue represents those increase in minutes. And so while it's hard to tell from a numbers perspective, the the differences in minutes for a K3 ELA students or in the area of ELA, English Language Arts, that's a gain of 75 minutes a week. For the same group of students, it's a 225-minute gain in math. For our fourth and fifth grade students in English Language Arts, it's a 135-minute gain. And for fourth and fifth grade math, it's a 185-minute gain. And the math data, of course, is exceptionally interesting to us because we have identified that through our data as as an area where we do need more focused time. Being remote all of the fourth quarter of last year has certainly impacted some of our math learning. And so we do need more time to best address our students' needs in that area. Other frequently asked questions that came in from the community through our Google form. One, there was a question, do teachers support this change? And I can share with you as we work through work groups and as we have planned for potential shifts and even down to planning the science and social studies and health units. Our teachers have been behind in a part of this thinking. And I know we have a couple of folks on with us tonight. I know Erin, Clary, are you available, Erin?
I am.
I'm going to pause here. Erin is the president of our Bexley Education Association. I'm not sure if Mark is able to join us as well this evening.
I'm here. I'm here, Jill. Hi.
Okay. And both Mark and Erin were part of our teacher work group. And I'll just pause so that you can speak to this question and your teachers.
Great, thank you. I actually, Mark and I worked together to kind of create a statement and not really sure how we were going to fit into tonight's presentation, but really appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak on the behalf of the members of our Education Association. So if you don't mind, I just have a small presentation, like a like a real quick read. Okay. So as you know, I am the president of the Bexley Education Association and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight to the board and to the community of the ideas of where educator members stand on this proposal that you're making this evening. And I know that families and students recognize and educators recognize how difficult the school year has been and the pressures of the pandemic and the illness, the economic distress, the anxiety. All of these things have produced, you know, great, deep hardships. And these things that have affected all of us, of course, have really made educating students this year even more difficult. Despite these difficulties, though, educators in this district have gone above and beyond to teach our students. There's not been a BEA member who hasn't worked late into the night, deep into the weekends, preparing lessons, recording videos, grading papers, sending emails, hand-delivering supplies, checking in personally with students and families, or any other number of tasks until this year. Right? We've done many of them, but not like this. This is just unprecedented. And we've done them without a moment of hesitation. And we've done them with love and with grace. In this context of endless work for the benefit of our students, we were asked to join this amazing organization of minds to find a new hybrid model that would help our students become more engaged in their learning with more consistency and increased in-person learning. And in spite of the limited time that was available for us, 13 teachers and specialists joined the task force. These teachers and specialists, as Jill mentioned earlier, led work groups with over 70 members throughout our district, developing the plan that best met our goals. What we are calling this hybrid 2.0. That means that nearly half of all BEA members were engaged directly with the work, which entitled Hours of Hours of Zoom Meetings, Brainstormings, Feedback from Staff, Editing. And the plan in front of you is the product of all of this hard work. We support making this move to the hybrid 2.0. It's an increase in time with students. And it was something that helps us do our job better. Our goal is to teach students and hopefully this new hybrid will get us closer to being successful and meeting all of our goals. We also hope that it takes some of the pressure off of students and families while they are at home. However, we know that making this shift is difficult right now. It's difficult for families. It's difficult for us. We want to make a special mention to how difficult it is on our intervention specialists for they have to work with families and schedule with their students for what seems to be the 100th time. Our classroom teachers have to reorient their curricula to best support the day-to-day attendance of students. And our teachers in the Allied and Performing Arts need to determine how best to support student passions in yet another new context. But we support this move because having students in the building more consistently and increasing, as you saw, the number of minutes we have in person with them. It's what's best for students. It also helps keep people healthy. We in the BEA will continue to work together as an organization to advocate for what is best for students and for what's best for teachers. And so we absolutely approve the move and hope that everyone sees it as as Jill presents it tonight. As to what's best for our students and our teachers at this time and our specialists. So thank you, Jill, for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Erin. And again, I would add that there were a number of parents who, in their comments, asked the question, how do Bexley teachers feel? Because it matters to them. And some even said, if the Bexley teachers support this, I support this. So Erin, thank you. And Mark, thank you both for for your support and your involvement in the work.
Thank you.
Another question that was frequently asked, what about lunch and recess in this new model? And so as you had seen, there was the midsection, the transition time. It indicated lunch, but lunch, that's actually the lunch for our faculty. But Dr. Hurley Williams has worked with his team so that we are able to provide lunches which would be delivered to homes for families who are interested in having those. They would be delivered, I believe, a week's lunches at a time so that they would have them at home and students would have access to those daily. But there wouldn't be lunch served within the school setting. And in regards to recess, that also would be something that would happen when students were at home and had more opportunity to be active in that setting. We truly intend to be very intentional with the three hours that we would have students and be very focused in our instructional time. And so of course, we would, as our teachers do, we would be responsive and give kids the needed brain breaks, but we would not be giving a designated recess time as we know it. Another question, when would I know what session my child is assigned to? And again, as I referenced, most likely, if you are a current group A student, you would be an AM student moving forward and group B would be a PM student. But we also have the opportunity to better balance our classes. When we initially did class assignments at the beginning of the year, that sometimes if things were thrown off balance, if families elected to have their students participate in e-learning. And so this gives us a chance to better balance those in some cases. And so our principals are hard at work in doing that now. But our goal, should the board approve this model at the meeting next Tuesday, December 15th, our teachers or excuse me, our principals would be ready to release those assignments to our parents and families the next day on the 16th. So we're working very hard to be able to do that. There were many questions in regards to quarantine plans, and I've devoted a whole section of this presentation to that conversation. But our elementary parents did want to know what was the plan for how students would be engaged in the learning. And then the final question that came up pretty frequently was, how will my child receive special education services, gifted services, and/or literacy support? And again, our specialist work group worked hard on what this might look like. And so our students will continue to receive the specialized support that is dictated by their specialized plan. And for some of our students, if in-person has worked as their best way to receive those services, we will similarly offer those services in their in-person time. For some students, they've shown some success with Zoom. And so it could potentially be offered through Zoom support in their remote time. So again, plans are being created that are very focused on the specialized needs of students and in response to their plans. There were also a lot of questions in regards to our elementary students that involve childcare. And this is just a sampling of some of those questions. Questions about local agencies that might be providing childcare, questions about transportation in that midday section, how to get kids to in front school and to childcare facilities, questions about how working parents manage the work schedule in a midday transition. And just in general, how can families be expected to handle another transition? And I'll respond to the last bullet first. The 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 transition challenge was not lost on the task force. And certainly, there was a great deal of conversation around asking families to make a shift again. But the driving force behind making the shift was to increase instructional time with our students and to bring consistency to their learning. We know that we need to meet our needs of our students and we know that they need to be connected to their teachers. And so that's the reason that we're making this proposal this evening. But nonetheless, we've continued to work with local agencies to help problem solve what childcare could to help problem solve what childcare could look like for families. On our task force, Mike Price and Katie Service were participants. And they represented Jeffrey Care through Bexley Rec. Mike Clapper was also a part of the task force. And again, he represents the JCC of Greater Columbus. Both of those programs, Dr. Hurley Williams and I have spoken with both programs this week and have been in communication about how we could work with them so that we can ensure that there are spaces or more support for our, our families that need to have this childcare. So in our conversations of this week, I know Bexley Rec was looking at the fact they would be able to offer additional support to families. And we've even explored things such as transportation, facilities using some of our, an open space that at Montrose or Maryland to help support numbers of students that may need care. We're also working again with Mike Clapper talking about the various things. And the JCC also indicated that they would have spaces to take additional students on and provide childcare as well. In addition to that, Dr. Good has been working with our student council president and also looking for ways that we might use Bexley High School students who could support families. And for some of those students who are looking for service hours in just a way to be of service to communities. So we continue to work with local agencies, but we also include or encourage our families that should this move forward, that they use their local faith institutions or connect with neighbors and friends to see how they might be able to work collaboratively together to problem solve this with us. So now let's shift to the six twelve schedule. And I really references as a ten day cycle. And it allows for our students to attend school every other day. And the biggest shift that is visible is the missing Wednesday or that Zoom day. So what's been remote previously is now built into the schedule. So with doing so, and you look at learning as a ten day cycle, our students would pick up in one in-person day in those ten days. So an increase of contact time from five in-person days from four in the previous schedule. But the big savings or the big driver for our secondary teachers who worked on this particular schedule was that this schedule provided an opportunity so that our secondary students had to go no longer than one day, one remote day in between in-person days. Currently, when you think about it, group A students as an example, attend on Monday and Tuesday. And then they're remote on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. So we currently have three days of remote in between our in-person days. And so again, going back and trying to create consistency and increase contact time. Their determination was that a strong way to do this would be to eliminate Wednesdays and build in an every other day cycle. What they also liked about this is that it was responsive to the feedback that we received from students who asked for fewer consecutive days on Zoom. And so they would have a day of Zoom, they would be back into live instruction. And again, we thought, I thought, we thought this was a good response to student, student feedback. And then our secondary team also felt that this would provide a nice transition. Should we have to fluctuate between models? So currently, as you think about it, as we're in remote or as we transition back out to what could be hybrid two point O, and eventually when we move to an all-in model, these are simple, simple shifts that cause the least amount of disruption to students. So frequently asked questions in regard to the secondary model. The first one was, why can't all K-12 students be on one of those two models? Why can't we all be on the ten day cycle model? Or why can't they all be on the AM PM schedule? So I'm going to start with the AM PM schedule. Why can't all students be on the AM PM schedule? So if you think about a seven period day for our secondary students. And if you broke them into AM PM, it would mean as an example, on Mondays, they would have first, second and third period. On Tuesdays, they'd have fourth, fifth and sixth period. And on Wednesdays, they would have their seventh, first and second period. And so you can see the rotation that would take them through three periods a day. Would one be a lot to keep track of and manage? And it would also in create, would increase gaps with our periods so that we had more than one day in between some of those classes. And so that worked against what the secondary was working to do, which was no more than one remote day in between classes. And so that's why they landed on something different than AM PM. When we looked at the potential ten day cycle for our youngest students, again, it would have been an increase of time that we could avoid with an AM PM in between instructional time. So for example, with a five-day instructional cycle, every day those kids have contact with their teacher, which brings consistency and learning. With the A-Day, B-Day schedule, they're in one day and they're remote. And so that creates a disruption to the learning. And so we knew early in the summer, even with our first task force, that there may come a time where we would have to bring models forward that would be different by level. And, and this is that time. Another question that we've received is why don't all teachers livestream from their classrooms? And to understand the answer to this question, you really have to go back almost a year at this time. And last year in December, we were actually finishing up the distribution of laptops to teachers. So for the first time, our teachers all had laptops to use as an instructional tool. And by March, they were being asked to now use that to create work from Google Sites, Google Classrooms from Canvas. So they had to change their teaching very quickly and adjust to this new teaching tool. When we moved into the start of this school year, we had some teachers who were further along in their thinking and their use of technology on that continuum. And so they may have been early adopters or folks who became creative and looking for ways to livestream from their classrooms. So they might've had different access to cameras and whatnot. Just within the last few weeks, Brad Pettit, our director of technology, has ordered additional technology to support teachers' options of, of doing so, should they choose to do that. So he's got microphones that he's ordered, tripods to put cameras on, ways that cameras can be able to swivel. But again, our teachers are still learning how to use all of these different technologies. And the other piece is that, is to remember that when, even when you do livestream, that it's just a window into the classroom. It's not the same as being at the table and being a participant. And so it's very observational and our student feedback was that, that wasn't something that they preferred. That wasn't their preferred way of learning. And so that's a long answer for the many reasons why it doesn't happen in every classroom, but there are a variety of reasons why it doesn't. Another question, isn't the rotating nature of the schedule and the fact that it changes weekly difficult for students? And our secondary principals and staff felt that the ten day cycle was very manageable and that our students would be able to adjust to it after a couple of cycles very easily. And then the third is the quarantine question. As I had mentioned previously, we'll, we'll discuss that later in the presentation. So now that you've heard both models, what I'd like to do is just walk you through again, the criteria of consideration that the task force looked at as they were determining if a model was feasible to bring forward as a recommendation. So again, we were looking for increases in contact time and consistency without diminishing health, safety, teaching and learning. So when we think about health and again, health defined as social, emotional and a mental well, and mental wellness, this is where it checks the boxes for us. First, the AM PM model provides daily connection for kids with our peers. And we know socially they crave that opportunity to be with their peers. We also believe that our students benefit because it provides increased access to and contact with our school counselors daily. Additionally, it allows our students to be with their teachers. And when our teachers can put their eyes on kids, they're better able to monitor and assess where they are from a social, emotional standpoint and to provide necessary supports as needed for those students. And then again, the access to allied arts as I've referenced, for them to be able to experience allied arts twice a week, we believe contributes to the social, emotional wellness of our students. It gives them that physical outlet that allows them to be creative and allows them to work collaboratively with their peers. When we slide over and we think about safety consideration, this particular model allows us to maintain the six feet of distance per district protocols. And it also allows us to provide ample time for cleaning between the cohorts of students. In regard to teaching, you heard Erin speak about the teacher experience and the many, many plates that our teachers are balancing. We feel the AM PM model further supports their capacity because it begins to align, align students and their learning and their planning subsequently. So when a teacher approaches their day in this model, when they think about supporting students, they are planning two in-person lessons that are aligned, an AM and a PM. And similarly then, they can provide the remote plan for the day that best supports students. So they're narrowing down the number of plans and it aligns the curriculum much more fluidly for our teachers. It also again continues to promote and support small group instruction. And that has been a benefit for us in this previous hybrid as well. When we have fewer students, it allows our teachers to be very focused in their teaching and support. And again, we've talked about the opportunity to continue to provide allied arts band and strings. In terms of learning for kids, it allows them to have access to their specialized learning supports per their plans. And it allows our teachers to better differentiate instructionally for our students. It also allows for a continuity of learning in regards to math and literacy. We can be much more focused, deeply focused. And our data says, again, we need to do so in math. But especially for our youngest learners, having continuity of learning, learning across each day is truly of benefit to them, benefit to them versus having gaps of days remotely. And then the last benefit to the learning process is again, learning with their peers, having that connection and five in-person days is a, is a success. When we think about then, the same criteria, and we think about the secondary model, again, from a health and safety wellness perspective, being able to have our students with teachers more frequently in that ten day cycle and with an every other day rotation allows our teachers to keep their eyes on kids and to be able to connect them to resources. If they're noting that our students need additional support. It's responsive to what our students have told us and it reduces consecutive Zoom days and allows them again, the requested in-person time with teachers. And most importantly for our secondary students, it helps to create a sense of belonging. When we think about, we've had students who have made transitions into new buildings. Our sixth graders have come in to a brand new setting for middle school. Our ninth graders have made a transition. This is a tough time to transition into a new school when you're working through a pandemic. But even beyond our sixth and ninth graders, our students want to be connected to their school, especially our high school, especially our middle school students. And so by increasing the frequency of time of in-person, we believe we best support that feeling of belonging. It also again maintains our six feet of distance per our district protocols. And much like I had shared with the elementary model, it supports teacher planning, fewer remote days and it allows for better alignment of their instruction. It also makes it easier from a teaching perspective, if we have to transition back and forth between models to do so. For learning, I referenced our sixth and our ninth graders, but again, it's, these are hard transition years and I certainly, parents who provided that feedback, we've thought a lot about that. And I know our teachers thought a lot about how to better support our students who have made those transitions. And so we believe this model does help support those students. It also provides continuity of the learning progression with more in-person contact. And again, it increases time with their peers. Additional concerns that have surfaced that we continue to respond to and to think of new ways to respond are really around the social, emotional, mental wellness. And, and so I wanted to take a moment to just address that this evening because again, our students are carrying a lot of stress. The stress of COVID, loss of experience and just constant change, not only in their learning experience or their school, but just in their life in general. And so some things that are happening of recent and have happened throughout this first semester, first of all, as we've gone back into remote, our school teams have been doing wellness checks with families. And our goal was to reach out to every single family in our district by the end of the week to assess how everyone is doing as we've moved to remote. Our school counselors and nationwide health, our nationwide children's hospital professionals continue to make connections to our students and to provide resources to family to best help them through this time. We talked about surveys that were used to find out how our students felt about hybrid. But I'd also given another example, even as we started school this year and we entered in the remote mode of learning, our high school leadership team presented surveys with our students each week and asked them, how are you doing academically? How are you feeling emotionally? And when students indicated that they needed that personal connection, our staff reached out to individual students. And sometimes they reached out to students who didn't ask to talk to somebody, but certainly gave an indication that they were going through some difficulties. So again, just some examples of how we work really hard to provide connection to our students and then especially connection and continued support of their learning during a remote time. As I referenced earlier, quarantine questions came up quite a bit in our survey, our opportunity for the community to weigh in. And so our principals have worked to create more specific plans that provide some guidance to school teams and certainly assist parents in understanding what to anticipate should they find themselves in a situation where their child is directed either by the district or a health official that they would need to go into a quarantine status. So for elementary, we will be utilizing a case manager in each of our schools. That will be the school counselor. And the case manager will serve as a primary contact to students and families. And they will help coordinate support. And part of their job is to make sure that students know exactly how to access their assignments. Whether that would be through Google Classroom or if there would be access to online meetings during their time of quarantine. So they would make sure that they had the links, the Zoom links so that they could participate. They'll also reach out just to do the emotional well check to see how they're handling the stress of being away from school. And again, to support them with the additional resources if needed. And a primary responsibility is for the case manager to ensure that students just feel that they are connected to their teachers during this time of quarantine. So what, what would the instructional plan look like for a student who might be in quarantine? First of all, they would have a very specific plan for literacy, something specific to that child that they would be working on during their time of absence. For math instruction, our teachers will use the time when their classes are, the rest of the class will be participating in allied, allied arts twice a week. Our teachers will provide math instruction or math support to our quarantine students or students who might also be out because they're demonstrating symptoms. Or they have received guidance from their healthcare professional that while they're, they're not COVID positive, they're not quarantined, that might have the guidance that they need to be out extended time. These dedicated times would provide teachers with the opportunity to provide additional math support so that our students felt like they had the understanding to keep themselves working through math assignments during their time that they're away. Our science, social studies and health units will be available to those students through Google Classroom. And our allied arts teachers have developed specific quarantine notebooks, which are online collaborative units, which provides students Which provides students with a variety of activities that they can be involved in while they're remote from school. And then they would also have the opportunity, our allied arts teachers will step forward and say, said they would love to be able to make connection with those students. Who are out, so they'll utilize time to make those connections. And then we also have the opportunity for students. Who participate in band and strings, that they could zoom in to an AM or and/or a PM session. If they wanted to participate in remote band or orchestra. So as always, our teachers are available or would be available via email. To continue to support teachers or support our students with additional academic assistance and guidance as needed. Much like our elementary, our middle and high school students would also have the support of a case manager. And this is something that'll begin new in the second semester. But once we receive notification that a student has moved into quarantine status, then our case manager. Will step forward and make sure that both teachers know and that the student is in contact. With this case manager and knows how to access things like the assignments through Canvas. We'll also provide these students with links to a help desk. And will provide them with further guides in terms of how they can view their classes through provided Zoom links. Or perhaps pre-recorded video lessons. So the case manager will get them prepared for this transition. And will really be the contact should there be questions or concerns moving through the, the time of quarantine. The school counselors will also reach out within the first few days that a student is out. Again, to provide emotional support, encouragement, to give them the connection that they need during your time away from school. And of course, are always available to provide additional resources to best support students and families in need. Our teachers remain available as they always do to provide remote assistance. And again, the case manager would be the person who can help make those connections possible for our students. So next steps, this is a lot of information. I know that, I know the board will reconvene on Tuesday, December 15th. At which time, board will vote on these recommendations. Should you vote in favor of these models to move forward? Our goal would be that on the next day, December 16th, that our principals at all three levels. Would be sending communications out to families that would provide more specific details to help support our students when we return to school in the second semester. For elementary families, this would be the time that our elementary principals would also send out the AM or PM assignment. And then as we look forward to the second semester and returning from the winter break. Part of the ask that we have for the board this evening is that they would consider shifting what was the student return date of January 5th. To Wednesday, January 6th. And doing so, it would allow our teachers' time, January 4th was already designated as a teacher-only day. Which is when we typically do professional development and they work on their report cards. We would ask for one additional preparation day. So that our teachers are ready for this transition and then our students would return to school on Wednesday, January 6th. So when you look at the calendar, it, it looks like we've got a lot of weeks in there, but there's a winter break in there. And so it's not a ton of time and we look forward to certainly answering questions that you might have now. That will better prepare you for your vote on the 15th.
Thank you so much, Ms. Abraham. That was fantastic. I've had the opportunity to serve on that task force and it's just been amazing to watch, not only the work of everybody. But frankly, your skills at Zoom. It's getting everybody in different, in different areas and different rooms and getting everybody back together. Our leaders were just, I was blown away by what they were able to do. So I'll open this up to our board members. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Abraham or anybody else on our, on our panel?
I actually just had a couple of questions for Ms. Abraham. First of all, so many questions were answered that I had, that you presented. So that makes it a lot easier. So these are some pretty simple questions, actually. The, the student voice, first of all, I just wanted to say the getting the feedback from the students sounded like you had a really good response from that. It's, that sounds like a high number of responses. Yes. So I, I think that that really is important because it does give us a perspective or give the, the task force in you a perspective. As to what works best for the students and as, as we all are talking about, that's what, that's what we need to be doing. Is looking to see what works best for them. In regard to the, the hybrid models. Did, did the task force, I'm assuming that this happened, but the task force look at different districts and what they use. And kind of get the pros and cons from that to come to the, the conclusion that the task force did.
Yeah, absolutely. And some of that work really began this summer when we were developing, when you think about that whole continuum. So that was work that had begun this summer. But then, when we looked at the AMPM, we had the opportunity. Fortunately, we have staff members who have children in other districts, so they were living those experiences. But we also talked to principals in other districts to find out, you know, what are the ins and outs, what's working and what is not working.
Great. So just a couple of things. You mentioned it toward the end about on the 16th, I think the assignments would be made. I know the way that we're doing hybrid now is alphabetical. Is that going to be alphabetical?
So they would stay, we would stay with that. Yeah, we, our hope is to stay with that. But with some of our students who left for e-learning after the school year started, we might have, I think some principals gave an example today. You might have 11 in one section and eight or six in the other. And so we're trying to get those closer to balance. But it would maintain as it had, with the exception of if we had to make some shifts to balance.
Right. Now, in as far as for, for families or specific student needs, are there. Are, will there be, will there be special requests, so to speak, entertained? Or is that just mostly on the individual? I, I don't want to open it up to where everybody gets to pick and choose what they want. But is it, will there be some kind of guideline if somebody wants a specific A or B or AMPM?
That's a great question. And we did talk about that. And we, we know that there will be requests. But here's the challenge, the complexity of creating the schedule, especially for our students on specialized learning plans. Being able to balance out how to use our specialists so that we can provide what those students need. That, that is a primary driver in trying to create those. Now, can parents indicate and share with their principals their unique circumstances? They can, but what I, I can say with pretty great confidence, there's just not a ton of flexibility to make a lot of changes in those lists.
Okay. And, excuse me. Oh, in, in regard to the model that was chosen or how, how this was arrived at. How did the CDC guidelines and the changing guidelines play into that, like with cleaning and distance and all, and all of those kinds of thing? I'm assuming that that was played a part in there. And you had some physicians on the panel, correct, or on the committee, right?
Well, the physicians live in Dr. Williams' committee. So, Dr. Williams, are you on the call?
I am.
Would you like to talk about the shift in the CDC guidelines since the summer?
From the summer as far as the cleaning's concerned? Yeah, I think it happened later. It was sometime maybe late May. But it took time for us to get trickling. We were trying to get, get our hands around that. And the cleaning was very clear that there was some concern of transmission through surface contact. And intermingling were our two big things that we were most concerned about over the summer. And that's why at that time I was leaning very heavily toward the A, excuse me, the AB model. Because that would keep kids from intermingling and allow us to take care of contact areas. But as, as COVID has taught us that things change and they learn more every day. And, and from a safety perspective, I'm quite comfortable with the model that's being proposed today.
Okay, that, that's kind of my question. But I, I knew that that was part of the, the consideration and, and the change. And, and, and I guess kind of as a final thing, none of this, nobody has the playbook on exactly what's best for each, each district. And I, and I appreciate my fellow board members and the teachers and the administration. And of course, you, Ms. Abraham and, and Dr. Good for, you know, being able to take a look at what maybe works better. And not just being stuck in one model. So I, I guess the hardest thing is, we have, there's a lot of variables. And a lot of things with childcare and, and all of those other things. But I think in the end, what, for me, what's most important is when you talked about the student feedback and what's best for them. That's, that's my number one priority in teaching them in the academic environment. So I, I really appreciate, like I said, I, I had a number of questions coming in, but almost all of those were answered by your presentation. So thank you for your thoroughness of it and, and addressing, you know, a lot of these very specific and very important questions. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Minio or Ms. Powers? You'll have to unmute yourself.
I'll go next, even though I had the opportunity to serve on this task force. And, you know, I'd just say two things. One, like with my opportunity to serve on the task force this summer. I've just been so incredibly impressed with the amount of work that our teachers, that Jill and community members who've been involved have put into this. It gives me great confidence in the recommendation that is being offered tonight. The thoroughness with which Jill has gone through, this presentation has, I know it has changed. From where it started to incorporate so much of what the community has been raising as issues. And I think that is so helpful to all of us to understand and make clear the thinking. What, you know, and, and reminding us over and over again that the goal was to find ways to increase contact and consistency for our students. I, I want to just add one thought that I had as we went through the presentation, listening to the presentation tonight. And it follows up on something that John said, which is the CDC guidelines. I hadn't noticed this until tonight, but on the slide that talks about checking the boxes. For the kindergarten through fifth grade for the elementary model. We note specifically that safety includes maintaining the distance and also provides ample time for cleaning. When we flip over to the criteria for the ABAB model. We just note that the safety maintains the six feet of difference of distance per our protocols. It doesn't note about the cleaning. And I think that's because there's. You know, it's still ABAB and the students, there's a, you know, there's a day of difference in who's in the building and we have overnight. I just want to confirm Jill or Harley that this change for the upper levels. Also meets the CDC guidelines because they've changed and we do not need a Wednesday, empty day to meet those guidelines.
That's correct. That is correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know.
Yeah, I'll just add, I think, I think what you'll see now is more, I mean, in the high school, even with the model in the secondary school. We used a kind of like a hand, a hand sanitize in, hand sanitize out, disinfect the desk while you're coming in, disinfect the desk before the next group comes in. So we make sure that they're, they're, the area, student areas are clean. That, that'll continue. That'll continue at the secondary level and then that'll, will occur between the cohorts at the AM and PM. I think as we, we discussed about, right? Ms. Abraham?
Thank you. And as with John, all of any other questions that I had were, were answered through the presentation. So thank you so much for that.
You're welcome. Ms. Minio?
Okay, I guess I'm up. Yay. Well, so first of all, thanks to everyone, Ms. Abraham and everybody. The 140-plus people who participated and everybody who wrote in and asked a question. Thank you all for making this a dynamic iterative process. I do have a couple of questions. First of all, I, I very much like the fact that like, we kind of led with the idea that this is increased minutes. Education, the educational benefits are driving this change. And so I, I appreciate that focus and I appreciate the highlights that you put on there. And I will say, I do have to say one other little bit of appreciation. I, I'm very appreciative to the students who participated in the survey. And the fact that you guys like shared it and broke it down. I say this all the time, like, you know, as a parent of middle school and high school students. I hear what I hear, but like, you know, my kid, like the answers that my kid gave were totally different from what everybody else in his grade gave. And so it was really nice to see that just because my kid likes this, doesn't mean that everybody else likes it. I thought that was very, I was, I was very appreciative that we could see exactly what the kids thought. So that was super beneficial. With that, I will, this is a question I want to ask. So I know we talked about student anxiety. And specifically in regards to COVID and the social, emotional piece. I'm just curious, was it, did any, do we feel like there was any feedback about students who were anxious about not being ready for college? Or this, the academic, how the, how this academic year was going to affect their, their future? Was that, was that, do we feel like that was something that was highlighted? I don't remember seeing that, but I'm just wondering.
I don't recall to that level of specificity. I, I would say what I read with some of our students, it was that balance between. There were students who were studying extensively or it was taking a long, long time to do those assignments. And so, you know, they were, they were up late, late, late. And again, the feeling of falling behind of not doing well. So not so specific to say, I don't think I'm going to be ready for college, but still that driver of, I gotta get it done. You know, am I doing enough? And the hard part with that again is connection. When you don't see your teacher in person. You have to wait, you know, three days to do that. Sometimes you're, you're left managing that on your own. And so that's the benefit of this is to be able to, again, have no longer than one day in between. So our teachers can do what they do best, which is put eyes on kids and be responsive. Now, the one thing I would add, even as we've, we've celebrated that we did have all of the student survey, our feedback that came in tonight. I really want to applaud our secondary teachers and administrators who really took to heart what those kids said as well. And, and took time to look at the, at the data and to further problem solve, how do we, how do we increase those connections with kids?
Thank you for that. That was, that was, that's actually kind of like a great answer to the question. Is that they're much more focused on today's academics and today's stress? And not, where am I going? To that point, have you guys in this? Do we feel like in the past, like, do we feel like in the current model, there was like. Especially like with the, I, I would say, well, I guess either, at either level, like, we'd see like one group getting ahead of the other. Or like, do you know what I mean? Like with that, with that two days in, I feel like there was a lot of potential where like some, I don't know, that they, they wouldn't stay on pace.
That planning part of it, I, I, it's so hard to explain, I think, sometimes. But again, it's the alignment that I really referenced in, in that check the box document. Because when our teachers are trying to plan for currently, you know, the instruction of live instruction of students who are going to be here today and tomorrow. But they're also playing for those kids who are not going to be here for a couple of days. And so it's not always perfectly in sync. And so it creates a whole nother layer of planning. And, and again, I, I really have to speak for our teachers on this one because it, it is a lot of work to be an exceptional teacher. Let alone to try to plan for people in so many different settings, quarantine, just remote because it's A day, B day. Or, or live in person. And so again, we think by, by reducing those days in between. We better support what you're talking about, which is that alignment of instruction.
Okay, thank you. That is, that's, that's super helpful too. My next question, I think, kind of comes, these are, these are two questions related to probably, I guess, like cleaning protocols. And so at the elementary level, there, because the kids aren't going to be having lunch in the building anymore. Okay, so first of all, that, I would, I, I'm, I guess this is a question for Dr. Williams and the upper elementary staff. But I'm assuming that's going to be, there's a benefit to that. but I'm assuming that's going to be, there's a benefit to that at the, at, at the, let me start over. I'm assuming the fact that, or I guess the question is, the fact that Cassingham Elementary is not going to be having lunch in the school, does that, like, relieve any pressure in the cafeteria on the Cassingham complex? Because they have less people coming in and out every day? Or is it, does that not really a factor in the, in the, in how it works?
It's going to be a huge reduction, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Williams, sorry.
I was just going to, that's, I don't even, that, that, that would be a huge help for our maintenance team. We can reallocate that time and those people to other areas in the building. They ju, they just probably will not be in, we can't be in every classroom in that amount of time. So we're still going to be relying on the classroom teachers to help with that. And if need be, we'll have resources that can help as well.
Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you. And, oh, and I guess my last question is, so I like very much the fact that there's going to, the case managers are going to be working with the students, the counselors are going to be working with the students that are in quarantine, and they're going to be, there's a weekly check-in. What, is there any concern that that would be like at a capacity? Or do we have, do we know? And how does that, does that take away? I mean, because, I guess because, especially because the counselors are going to be doing a lot of like, a lot more like mental health check-ins or there, there's parts built into this plan that are like routine parts, but then there's also going to be quarantine. If that quarantine number, is there a tipping point that, or are we concerned that there's a tipping point where the, that might not be manageable? And do we have like a backup plan for how, who, who would support them?
So first, I would say, and, and I think you're talking elementary specifically with that question.
It's just across the board.
Okay. So elementary, it'll be the school counselor that provides that support.
Okay.
Okay. And so far, our numbers of students in quarantine at the elementary have not been a, a huge unmanageable number. Similarly, what I would say in secondary, I mean, we're, we're devoting a support person to specifically be the case manager for six through 12. And so that is the primary responsibility. Now, if those numbers become excessive, I would think at that point, this would be something that our evaluation team, it, it would, it, that would go into their area because they would likely be reviewing that data and it would be perhaps more indicative of, of a bigger scenario that we need to be exploring. So we feel as we enter this, that a case manager can manage that and, and make sure that folks that feel connected. But again, as with any of this work, we continue to monitor and, you know, seek feedback, seek feedback of experience for kids who have done it, and then, and then revise if it's not working.
I, I very much, thank you, Zara. And I especially really like that idea that maybe that would be like, if that, if that was the case, that would be something then that would kind of fall into the evaluation team's consideration as well as like the academic piece. That was a great point. Thank you. And, and then the last thing I have to say is I just really, I just have to give one last little shout out and say, I really like the idea that the allied arts teachers might have extra, they might have extra, they might have availability to support students that are in quarantine with some, you know, we're talking about the fact that we don't, that Zoom fatigue and that whole, I don't, you know, I just think that's a great extra piece to support the kids. So I, I just thought that was awesome. Anyway, okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all of the input and questions. Ms. Abraham, I just have two, just because I'm not great at note-taking, but I wanted to have the numbers specifically for me. So if you wouldn't mind going back, the increase of minutes for in-person instruction? I got the numbers for math, so K3 math is 225 increased minutes. And for grades four and five is 185 gained minutes in math. Can you tell me for the language arts, what those numbers are again?
For K3, it was a gain of 75 minutes.
Okay.
For fourth and fifth grade, it was a gain of 135 minutes.
Okay, thanks. I just want to have those down because there's really, the bar graph struck me and the actual numbers struck me. This is just, it's so important for our students to have this. It will make a huge difference to their learning and it, that was very resounding to me. So thanks for, for getting me squared away on that. All right, do we have any other questions for any of our panelists? I know that Ms. Mitchell is, will have the opportunity to review this and, and has a meeting with you to, to review it before our December 15th meeting.
Marley, I had another question, just real quick for Ms. Abraham or, or whoever. Is there going to be any kind of change in the availability of teachers for like office hours or individual time with students in this model as opposed to our previous model? Because they're going to be in the classroom or they're going to be at the school every day or in the classroom every day?
This doesn't change the office hours that they have available. But to solve some of the challenges that we're having, just in terms of teachers and, and some of the other stressors as, as we're experiencing right now and as we've worked through a shortage of substitutes, many of our teachers are currently giving up their planning period to provide coverage of somebody else's class to ensure that we have adult supervision. Dr. Good's worked extensively in trying to build up our substitute list so that one, we have more access to folks who then free up our teachers during their planning periods to do just those types of things, to be able to reach out to kids, to respond to emails in a more timely manner and whatnot. So the model by itself doesn't create more time, but we're problem solving a, a different issue that we hope will resolve that.
And maybe one other kind of follow-up to that. Maybe this is beyond the scope of what we're talking about, the, the teacher issue. And, and that, is there, I, I guess, from this perspective, it, since they're in school every day now, the, this, this issue of, of why we're in remote right now, not because of the safety, but because of the, the inability of, of us to fulfill positions, is this, do you foresee, and maybe that's more of just of a, an opinion question, if this helps with, with that issue? I know that we're trying to build up our substitute list and, and I know that that's been going on. And maybe that's more of a, a question for later on, but it is definitely a concern. I really like the model, but, you know, if we don't have the people, then.
Well, and again, and, and part of what I would want to add, and just, again, to help us as we understand why we're in remote, we, as an evaluation team, and I sit on the evaluation team, we talked a lot about systemic stress. And systemic stress is, you know, when you've got people who are trying to cover a lot of different responsibilities and, and in addition, who are trying to plan instruction in multiple modes. And so again, I keep going back to this, but it's so important to understand, it's one thing to plan for students who are going to show up every day. It's another thing to plan for kids that you know they're going to show up in two days. And it becomes another thing when you know kids aren't going to show up for the next 10 days. And so that's the stress that is complicating things on top of it when teachers lose their planning periods. So our hope is that by creating more consistency in the student day, we eliminate, eliminate the number of ways that teachers have to plan so differently by having more consistent plans for students who are in quarantine and dedicating specific people to help be the connections. We feel like we're putting some pieces in place that is, they're responsive to the systemic stress that we're feeling. And, and hopefully that those allow teachers to have their planned time. The increase in subs that Dr. Good has been working so hard to, to get for us will also provide consistency. So again, each of those pieces plays a part in alleviating some of that stress the system is experiencing.
Thank you. And that, that was kind of outside the bound of what you presented, but I, I appreciate the answer. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I think that that's something, what you said makes sense to me that, that this, this model will help at least hopefully alleviate some of the systemic stress that, that we're having. So that, that helps a lot, too. So thank you for asking a poorly, poorly worded question. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, I think that's it for us for this evening then. Since we don't have any other matters that properly come before the board, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Done, moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, we're done. Thank you all very much again for taking your evening out. And, and again, to Ms. Abraham and that task force for the exceptional work. We're very, very grateful.